This is a cross-section. And this is Galveston Street where that street ties in, looking north to downtown. You've got the brick pavers from downtown, the sidewalk, the uniform signs for the community, bike lanes. These are just the uniform sign. They also recommended that there were some areas inside the study area that they felt like needed more detailed planning. Those are areas around the Crown Coliseum and the areas just south of the Coliseum, and a manufactured home park off Ganey Road. The land use plan, I'm not going to go into the real details, but the area that you see in marv, that's all farmland. The green is open space. The yellow is low-density residential. The light yellow is basically half-acre lots. Purple is industrial. Red is commercial. The light blue is airport-oriented uses. And those are uses that are compatible with the operation of the airport. And then the Crown Coliseum development area. And any uses that's allowed in this area should complement and enhance the Coliseum in that area. Crown Coliseum, by the way, is in this location right here. Some other recommendations is they want to provide fenced walking trails around the perimeter of all the school sites for the community. Establish standards for private trash service pickup, sheriff substation, and develop an A-1-type zoning district that allows only stick-built homes. And that's my presentation. What I'd like to do is ask that some members that participated on the citizen planning committee to stand if they're here. Thank you. Also, I'd like to add special thanks for the Beasley Broadcasting Group. They did video announcements for us in the preparation of the plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from any member of the board, from Mr. Denning before we open the public No questions. Thank you, Mr. Denning, as always. You do a good job. We appreciate it. Speakers?
We have four speakers in favor, no speakers in opposition.
Okay. If you call the first speaker, I'll open the public hearing.
Our first speaker in favor is Paul Johnson.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
You don't have to do that. We'll do it.[195.34][195.34](Laughter).
That's good. My name is Paul Johnson. I live at 1202 Hunter's Trail in Hope Mills, really around the Graves Creek High School area. I'm a Cumberland County resident, and I respectfully appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the persistence of the committee and volunteers who gathered every two or three weeks for more than a year to draft the plan being presented tonight. The submitted proposal land use plan, proposed land use plan for Cumberland County South Study Area now represents a 21-month journey by interested and time-invested citizens and an excellent effort by the county planning office, comprehensive planning office, Will Denning, Denise Sykes, and Will Linville in particular, in shepherding the process for us. Drafting the plan you're looking at tonight started, as Will mentioned, at a crowded Graves Creek Middle School auditorium on September 4th, 2013. And then from then to tonight's county commissioners meeting, there were, I believe, 15 more meetings attended by a diligent group of volunteers and interested citizens. Overall, as Will Denning pointed out, 53 different people attended, and about 20 or 25 people was the average attendance each two- or three-week session, most of them at the Graves Creek Recreation Center from the beginning in 2013 through November of 2014. It also, the plan also was presented to and passed by the county planning board about four weeks ago. Drafting the plan for a fairly diverse area with a variety of interests has been a process. And there was some contention at times, lots of spirited discussion, but in all, in all, a wholesome effort to fairly reach consensus on what the will of the community was and is regarding how the growth should be planned and monitored in future years to come. I believe that I can speak for the fact that the plan before you represents the overall will of the community and collectively represents the thoughts that were offered at all the meetings and the consensus of the opinions hashed out and thoroughly discussed along the way. So I thank you for your consideration of the plan and hope and ask for your support of our groups with your acceptance of the South Central Study Area Land Use Plan as a guiding document for our future.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you for your participation. We appreciate it. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Roberta Waddell.
Welcome, Roberta.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Roberta Waddell, 3941 Ganey Road, Fayetteville, a resident of the study area and a member of the planning committee. Some of you may know that I served on the planning board years ago, and I served several terms on the Board of Adjustments, so I have a little bit of experience in this area. I am here to speak in favor of adopting this plan for South Central Cumberland County. It is not perfect. No plan ever is. However, the citizens of the area came together to express their wishes for the area. Some wanted more open space and no development. Others were looking for enhanced shopping opportunities. Some were concerned about control over their own property, and we were pretty unanimous that we didn't want to become part of Fayetteville. However, we were able to work together to come up with the best plan we could. I feel it is very appropriate that there be a plan because from 1990 to 2010, the population in the area has just about doubled, and it continues to grow. We can look all around our county and see the results of too little planning for growth and development. And our committee was asked to consider what we would like to see in 20 to 30 years. I want to thank the staff that worked with us, particularly Will Denning, Denise Sykes. Our group could be contentious at times, and frustrations with other part of county organizations were expressed. The staff was always professional and showed skill and great patience in helping work through our concerns. The group that came together ranged from people who had lived all their lives in the area to people who had moved in recently. We met for over a year and looked at and discussed every parcel of land in the area. In fact, we divided into two groups, and each group looked at all the parcels and then came together to negotiate on those parcels and areas on which the two groups differed. What you have before you is a plan that takes the results of discussion, arguments, and compromise among the people of South Central Cumberland County. Nobody got everything they wanted, but you understand that we seldom do. I do believe that if another group was convened with a different set of participants from the area, you'd get a very similar result. There were some amenities we would like, more open space. We would like to preserve farmland where possible. New residential developments should have sidewalks on both sides of the street, and we would like to make our commercial areas more attractive. Those are just a few of the recommendations. As you can see, there are about 40 pages total that you can refer to. So I have one more page. Some of us did not feel that the area around the Coliseum should be part of our area, Graves Creek, and we know that the South Central area butts up to the city limits. However, the area around the airport, but not including the airport, was part of our defined land use area, and we did our best to make suggestions. I'll only be a little bit longer. We made recommendations that would not impinge on the airport operations, for instance. The airport manager attended many of our meetings. We wanted to see better utilization of the Coliseum area. One of the recommendations we made for the Coliseum area was that the community needs to provide better direct access between the Crown Coliseum complex, downtown, the mall, and the military reservation. This is a way to enhance the value of the Coliseum and encourage complementary development of the area. We recognize that this will not happen this year or next year, but we know that it won't happen in a decade or two if it is not part of a plan. We also recognize that the city of Fayetteville would have to be involved in any development in the area. I ask you to support the work of the Graves Creek South Central Study Area Plan Committee.
Thank you, Roberta, and thank you for your participation. Next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioner and members of the board, members of the planning board. My name is Deborah Stewart. I reside at 2494 Factory Lane. It is in Graves Creek, although it has a St. Paul's mailing address. I do not have a prepared statement, as I've been before you before, to let you know how I feel about the overdevelopment in Graves Creek that is on record. I did want to let you know what I feel is important to me. I do support this plan because I have no other ideas of how we can go about controlling the development in Graves Creek, but I wanted you to know what's important to me, which is the preservation of wildlife habitat, the preservation of farmland, because without the preservation of farmland and wildlife habitat, we do not have a sustainable future. The preservation of the wildlife habitat provides not only the preservation of certain species, but also allows hunters to have a place to hunt. The farmland, once you put it under development, it rarely ever goes back to farmland unless there's a major catastrophe like a war or an act of Mother Nature. So these are things I want you to consider when you look at this plan, and also the preservation of the historical areas, which I fear a lot of times historical significance of areas get bulldozed over and lost, and we do not know what actually happened in this historical moment. And I think those areas need to be preserved as well. There is such a wide diversity of habitat out in Graves Creek, from the plant life to insects to animal life. It's just amazing. My own field, I can watch foxes go out and play and chase butterflies. I've watched deer cross through the field. I've seen pitcher plants and mantis, praying mantis, and lizards of all kinds, as well as snakes, which I do not try to kill unless they are poisonous and present an immediate danger. So I love Graves Creek. I've been out there since 1980, when I came back stateside from serving the tour in Korea, and it has been my home ever since, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Deborah. We appreciate your help, too. Next speaker.
Our last speaker is Ms. Regina Blanding.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Regina Blanding, resident of 515 Tittenup Avenue, Fayetteville. I stand before you because I may be one of the few people on the committee, on this planning committee, that believes that growth isn't a bad thing. In actuality, when I see the growth in our study area, what it shows me is there is something that outsiders see in Cumberland County that they like and they want to be part of. Whether it be our fabulous school system, and I am biased as a school principal, our industries, and growth in our economy, and in seeing programs like what Dr. Keen is presenting for Fayetteville Community College, we have something to be desired. So my main purpose in being part of this committee was to make sure that we weren't against growth, but that we did responsible growth. We are making a plan for the future, not just for our own children and grandchildren, but for all future residents. So I stand before you and ask that you strongly consider approving this plan because this has been a labor of love for so many of us. We've had to make sure that we set out our comfort zones, respect many differences of opinions throughout this over-year-long process, but we want to make sure that as a corridor into Fayetteville and Cumberland County, we aid in continued growth and development, prosperity and positivity in the community, as well as preserving the quality of life of current and future residents. We want to make sure that as we look to recruit teachers, high-quality students from outside of Cumberland County, that we are giving them desirable areas to move in. As a resident, I truly believe that we have an area that's wonderful, but there is still room for improvement, and this plan is outlining guidelines for how to improve this residential area, sorry, area for residents and as for industry. So I ask you to look at all aspects to consider not just the interest of some, but the interest of all in making sure that this particular area continues the work that you're already doing of enhancing Cumberland County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blanding. Thank you for your participation. Any other speakers?
There are no speakers.
I'll close the public hearing and thank all of you for your comments and the involvement. And Mr. Keith.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd. If we endorse this plan tonight, is it reasonable for us to expect that the planning board and the planning staff will take this into consideration, reasonable for us and reasonable for the residents, that every new zoning, every county decision on water and sewer and infrastructure will, that this will be considered from your planning staff and planning board also?
Yes, sir. We've, there's a statement in the plan that says if there's triggers, if there's some changes, such as water and sewer, of course, that could affect the plan, and it would be reflected in the staff and planning board's recommendation.
Well, I think you're leading right into what some of the things that are recommended on here are, you know, incorporation of an area, reasonable water and sewer. I mean, reasonable, it's very subjective. We, I mean, how are you going to deal with those type of things? We endorse the plan. Are we endorsing incorporation of that area?
No, these were, I believe, listed under the recommendations, which are reflected as far as the incorporation, that would be left up to the citizens, of course. The water has been addressed, but may be addressed in the future. It's where that water would go and how it would be used, I think the plan is trying to reflect. In areas such as farmland preservation, water would always be used for potable water, not for industry or commercial purposes.
But we also had a water and sewer district request.
Sure. Right. But I think the lines are, you know, they're different-sized lines in that district. Some of those lines support residential, not necessarily commercial or industrial.
The plan was, it's a good plan, and please don't misunderstand, but there seemed to be a lot of, we want development, we want controlled development, but we want rural, and it sounds to me like there's some conflict in a lot of the plan, and I'm just curious how your planning staff and planning board are going to consider these each time, because there's an expectation of the citizens who put a lot of time into this, that their voice will be heard.
And it is reflected in the recommendations, but plans grow. Circumstances change in the environment, such as utilities, which would affect the plan. And there was a statement added to the plan by the planning board that said when these triggers, is what they're referred to as, occur, and the best example, of course, is a utility, water and sewer. Then we, this plan is one plan of several plans we use in our recommendation. I don't think a lot of people realize that we have what's also called a land use policies plan, which lays out criteria that need to be met for certain land uses to be recommended and approved for by the staff. So we have to try and work in conjunction with the land use policies plan. So if something occurs that would be a characteristic that's reflected in the land use policies plan, is now it would become favorable for commercial or higher-density residential, then it would take precedent because these plans change. They grow, as we say.
Do you believe this current plan conflicts with the land use plan at all?
No, sir. And I think you'll find in every area we go to in the county, because you're talking about a county where, you know, half of this county is considered quote-unquote rural, but it's an urban county. So many of these areas that we go to, a good, some of the, part of the area may be urban already, some's rural, they extend, as in this particular case, from the city all the way down to the county line in Bladen County, of which you want to preserve as much farmland as we can below Thrower Road, which is the ridge that, you know, we know sewer most likely won't be going down there anytime soon, not gravity, anyway, not PWC, based on our discussions with them. Water, we're for water all through the county. I don't think this plan is inconsistent with that. But when there are changes, such as the placement of a new school, which we're going to see in another area that we've done, if a new school is put somewhere where we've already done an area plan, that would essentially affect, have an effect on the adopted plan as it exists. And then what we have to do is rely on, the staff goes all the way around the county again and revises these plans. So, for example, we'll be getting to the Eastover Plan in a few short years to revise that. If you remember, that Eastover Plan was done prior to utilities. And of course, being as we have the utilities now in this Eastover area, the plan has, some of our recommendations are inconsistent, of course, because we have to go to the land use policies plan then and say, okay, now that we have utilities, how has that changed how we want to see plan?
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. And Mr. Adams?
And I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I do applaud the citizens. I mean, 21 months is a long time to me on anything, so I do congratulate you on that and thank you for that. The issue I have is somewhat the water and sewer policy, very, very conservative, and actually, even when we go down to the third bullet, which is the explore the establishment of a water district with, from Bladen County, is to be so explicit to announce, I mean, to determine where you're going to come from. And clearly, you know, I've always been a proponent that we need water throughout this county. I mean, that's, I've always talked about that. I think it's important. I think these wells are going to fail at some point throughout. People have 10-foot wells that are basically surface water, and to designate an entity already as opposed to just indicating that we want some, a water district, not necessarily from Bladen County. On the table is a possibility, and y'all started 21 months ago, so you wouldn't have known that, and maybe some revision on that, with PWC possibly providing, being a water source throughout the county without annexation. Now, I understand where the people from Graves Creek come to, and I think it was explicit by one of the people that he did not want to be annexed by the city of Fayetteville. But at the same time, when I look at this plan, not, you know, being detrimental, but it seems as though they want urban amenities, but they want a rural area. It just seems to be in conflict. And then you tell me that in terms of the water, we only want water when there's a health problem. I think that's a limited view of this plan, and I think we need to be talking about, and from the zoning, and I don't know if the commissioners, we ever talk about that, whether we eventually have this policy or whether we want, that we want water throughout this community. And I think that if that's the case, the zoning board should be looking at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
Okay, Ms. Counsel.
I lost my place, but I believe, I move that we approve the plan as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you so much for your participation. Thank you, Mr. Denning and Mr. Lloyd from the Planning Department. We really appreciate what you've done on this. It takes a long time, and I would like to say one thing. Mr. Denning made this statement according to the minutes of the May 19 meeting, and it should be noted that this plan may be changed, modified, or altered if the basis for some or all of the land use decisions made within this document changes in the future. Factors that may precipitate this change include, but are not limited to, the extension of public or community water and sewer, road improvements or changes, the construction of a school or public facility, changes in the economic climate, land use policy changes, or the location of major employment in or near the area. I think that sort of sums up where this plan is. And I, too, there are already bad, it's already, Mr. Adams, we have been through this, just for your benefit, and I'm sure you probably already know this. We've been through, there is already bad water in Graves Creek.
Right.
In so many places, and we desperately need water in that area. So again, thank you for all you do in this area. The next item of business is nominations and appointments.
I care, not care about. We voted.
Yeah, you did.
We voted.
He did.
Okay, you'll be all right. Nominations. We have one vacancy on the Mid-Carolina Rural Transportation Advisory Committee, and I think that was supposed to be a commissioner. Do we have any volunteers yet? Should we appoint Mr. Fairclaw since he's not here tonight?
He's not here.[1522.41][1522.41](Laughter).
We won't do that to anybody. We do, we still need somebody there.
We would hear about that.
And we have a nomination to the Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one vacancy.
I think it was Detective Milton Brown.
Okay.
Little button there.
All right. Mr. Adams has nominated.
Detective Milton Brown.
Detective Brown.
I've been to court too much today.
Yeah. Any other nominations? Yeah, I'm going to call on Commissioner Counsel for the appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint to the FTCC Board of Trustees Paul Crenshaw and Dr. Linwood Powell.
There's only one vacancy there, so we'll have to vote on it.
That's a vote.
All right, we'll vote.
What is a vote?
There's only one vacancy. So all those in, in favor of Paul Crenshaw? Mr. Adams and Mr. Keith?
You've got Mr. Evans.
Oh, Mr. Evans, I'm sorry. Mr. Evans. Dr. Linwood Powell. What are we doing, in case of time, Mr. Moorefield?
No one was appointed.
No one was appointed? Just bring it back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At the next meeting, at the very, at the first meeting in August.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Counsel.
I'm sorry. I see now.
You can go on with the next. You can go on with the next.
I'm sorry, and I apologize to Dr. Powell. I'm making that nomination. To the Human Relations Commission, Mr. Kevin Brooks and Ms. Kim Robinson, and to the Transportation Advisor Board, Ms. Antoinette Wiggins.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
I'm going to recede the Board of Commissioners meeting, convene the Bragg Estates Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting. We have two items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Has been a motion and a second to approve the Water and Sewer District Governing Consent Agenda for Bragg Estates. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
We'll reconvene the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. The next item is an attorney-client matter. Entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor?
Unanimous.
We're in closed session.
Oh, God.